Okay, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Wednesday, the fourth of November, 2020. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman. Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Cormus present.
Let's go for me, stop.
Item number one, September 2020 cash flow report.
Items open.
This item is open and I believe we have the controllers office here.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Deputy Controller Delano Dow. We filed September 2020 cash flow report with the common council. So I know if you guys had any questions in regards to the report that was filed.
Any questions, colleagues? I have a couple. When you look at the cash flow for B F S A expense for October, it's almost double. What is that related to? Why is that double?
There was a discrepancy in sales tax. That was issue in the previous months. So that's something we did reach out to B F S A. And the calculation towards the sales tax between upstate and downstate was incorrect. So that's a retro adjustment to bring us to where we should truly be at. And we'll see that difference in October sales tax receipts.
Is that you that's for the B F A say expense?
No, that's that's the monthly sales. So we get a sales tax. The sales tax goes through the B F S A. And they. So basically it was a miscalculation and it's a correction that we'll see that will post in October 2020.
Okay, so it will be and it will get 11 million or you say it's going to be less than 11 million?
Well, it would be 11 million. But basically it's the true up. So it was reconciliation that was done. So we got our actual sales tax from July 2020 through September 2020. I guess it was a review done or reconciliation done or what we should have received. And we'll see that adjustment in October. And that's why you see that huge swing from six million to 11 month over month.
Okay. And any other questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to table.
Motion to table.
Item number two, proposed agreement with SAS Institute.
This item open?
This item is open. And who's here speaking on it? Speak on item.
Mr. Chairman, we've been joined by Daryl Springer, representing M I S for the item.
Good morning, everyone.
Is he speaking on it?
Speaking right now, sir, you might have a little bit of a delay on your end.
Good morning, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. I guess this is a proposal for the SAS solution. This is a statistical analytics system for the city of Buffalo and for the police department. This will allow us to aggregate all the data that the city has into one warehouse in order to process and use A I to come up with real time analytics for the police department. We've locked down the price to 1.3 million dollars for the first. I'm sorry. My apologies. Does somebody have a question? The city's negotiating team has worked with SAS. I'm sorry, having audio breakup here. The city's negotiating team has locked down the price of 1.3 million for the first year. And the three year project will years two and three will be 800,000 and 50,000, 500,000. And the cost for the one time purchase of the first year. We have built in a cancellation policy for this in case funding does not come through. We would like to move forward with the proposed agreement with the SAS Institute. I believe Rob Mayer is on as well. Rob, do you have anything you wanted to add?
You're on mute.
I think Rob might be having audio difficulties.
Sorry, the host had me muted. Thank you, Chairman. Sorry for having some technical issues. But I think Daryl summed it up nicely. The SAS contract is a critical component to some of our, many of our reform efforts. We received permission to negotiate a single source contract back in February. Daryl and I, as well as members of the law department, have been involved in those discussions. And we think we've come to a robust agreement with SAS that recognizes the need for this type of analysis and evaluation. But at the same time, contains the necessary language that will ensure we enter into this contract and execute it in a fiscally responsible manner. So we feel very confident that this is a good agreement and are anxious to get to work with SAS when the opportunity becomes available.
Any questions, colleagues? Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you. I guess I just don't fully understand what would the information be used for? Did I read also somewhere that eventually this will go to other departments? I just have a kind of a lot of questions on what kind of data would be collected? How would it be used? Would it be something that, you know, the public would see the data to? Just a couple of questions I have on that end.
Thank you. Rob Mayer, Director of Policy. I'm happy to answer that. So the type of data, it's really a quantification of actors, actions and interactions in a real environment. This is the type of data that, for example, the New York State Department of Health employed when they were developing models for how to analyze and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And what it does is it quantifies in real time specific actions that people undertake, not just actions in the field, but the type of training they may have had, who has trained them, when they receive that training. And that's just, for example, with the police department. And then after it quantifies, it essentially analyzes them in a statistical model so that we can both evaluate the effectiveness of the things we've done, but also start looking at predictive models for how variables may impact those kinds of future decisions. And then as far as availability of that information, obviously, the results of that analysis are going to be made public in accordance with any federal, state or local open government policies or laws. But the actual analysis that we do, that's a part of an internal decision making process. So the public will have access to the results of the work we do, just like with the Department of Health at the state level. But there's a lot of background work that's going to be done that obviously is going to be an internal decision making analysis process.
Any other council member? Okay, Mr. Gresham.
Hold one second, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Noakowski, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Will this, hi, Rob, just a quick question. Will this data be available on the city's website or the open data portal?
So the results of that data are going to be subject to all of the local open government policies and ordinances that the city has developed. Obviously, our intent is to make this information available to the extent we can and the types of information available to the extent we can in accordance with those policies. So, yeah.
Mr. Gresham? Can you say your name and put the record also?
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? Hi, Councilman Wyatt, thank you. Members of the council, everyone else, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Miles Gresham. I'm an attorney. I'm also a policy fellow with the Partnership for the Public Good. Partnership for the Public Good or P P G for short. Did submit a memo to the memos, to the members of a council. You should be receiving it shortly on this item. And I just have a few questions that I'd like to bring up. And I appreciate Mr. Mayor being here as well. Maybe you can answer some of them. The first question, which has already been raised, is about data transparency. I understand that this, you know, the purpose of this system is to track reform efforts. There were several reform measures enacted by the mayor via executive order earlier this summer. I'm still curious as to whether or not any of that data is going to be tracked by this system. For example, stop receipts. Police are supposed to give stop receipts to individuals when they are pulled over now. You know, stating the reason for the stop. Is that going to be included in the data system? Police are also supposed to be issuing onsite appearance tickets for a lot of offenses. Is that sort of action going to be uploaded into the data system? I guess would be my first question. And again, you know, is all of this data going to be available on the open data portal? So that is my first question. My second question, I don't know if it's more convenient for me to go through all of my points at once and then let folks respond. If that's the case, I'll just keep going. Otherwise, if folks want to interrupt me, feel free. The second question is, you know, again, who is really benefiting from this? I understand that it's going to cost, you know, the city 1.3 million dollars in the first year. So is the, for example, is the police advisory board, do they have access to this data so that they can, you know, use it in their analysis of, you know, how the police need to be advised? And the third question is, is this a shift to what's often called predictive policing? So, you know, using data to make real time decisions sounds a lot like a shift that we've seen in other parts of the city, the state, excuse me, including New York, where they've used software systems such as Patternizer to sort of algorithmically predict where crime might happen. This has produced, I think unintentionally, a racially disparate impact where, for example, in New York, the Patternizer system has resulted in the police harvesting that system for a gang database. That gang database lists folks that, you know, aren't allowed to see the database. So they can't know whether or not they're on this gang database. And most recently, 99% of the individuals on that database were non white. This is in New York City, the home of, you know, organized crime, the home of the mafia. And yet 99% of the people on this game database are non white folks. So would this predictive policing have a disparate impact? Finally, I'd like to know whether or not this system is going to include arrest data and whether there are methods built into the system to filter certain arrest data. The reason I ask is because, as some of you know, according to the New York criminal procedure law, when charges are either not followed up by the district attorney or whether they are dropped or proven untrue in court, any, you know, record of those charges is supposed to be sealed under criminal procedure law. You know, mug shots and fingerprints are supposed to either be destroyed or given back to the accused if those charges aren't followed through with or if they are disproven or if they are dropped. If that doesn't happen, then my concern is that this new system might open the city up to liability like we've seen in New York, where New York City was sued in 2018. That lawsuit is ongoing. The case site is R C versus City of New York. But in that context, the subject of the suit was that these data policing systems that New York City employed did not adequately filter out all the rest data or, you know, data that was later, data pursuant to charges that were later dismissed or dropped or proven untrue. And because of that, the lawsuit alleges that the city violated the ceiling statute. And now the city could be exposed to millions of dollars in legal liability. And I'm concerned that, you know, this system may expose Buffalo to similar liability, which of course, you know, would be a problem for a city with a budget shortfall. And it's already paid out at least 4.5 million dollars this year due to police misconduct. So those are my main three questions. The extent of data transparency, for whose benefit this money is being spent? And then finally, is this a shift to predictive policing? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gresham. I know you directed it towards Mr. Mayor and I know that I was told that someone from SAS is on. So I don't know if you want to answer that, Rob, or if you want someone from SAS to answer that's been on.
Councilmember, I'll ask or I'll respond to the questions that Mr. Gresham has asked. And I think we appreciate, we appreciate those concerns. Those are concerns that obviously we care about and are going to to pay very close attention to. I think just, you know, in response to some of them, obviously, I spoke to the data transparency issues when I responded to councilmembers Bowman and Noakowski's questions. And so I think the city is committed to adhering to all of these, the policies that are in place. And we intend to make the appropriate and amounts of data available on our various platforms in accordance with the city's open government policy. I think the benefit of this is obviously the residents of the city of Buffalo. They're going to benefit when we have deeper layers of analysis. Again, I point to the example of COVID-19. SAS was an important consultant and contractor with the state of New York in performing the type of analysis that showed what happens if you don't flatten the curve, if you don't take particular types of actions like wearing a mask. They were able to accurately and quickly predict what was going to occur and direct how the state should respond in order to avoid those consequences. And then on that really next layer of analysis that we're trying to get to, they demonstrated that there were racial disparities in transmission and in depth. And that type of public health information typically wasn't available until a year or two after the event. But because we were able to get that information in real time, we were able to shift strategy, identify neighborhoods where we need more robust testing standards, identify how we should craft a message to respond to what was happening in real time. And we didn't have to go back after the event and say, we should have done this better. We knew exactly what was happening because of this type of analysis. And to the third general point, I would just say that there is a difference between predictive analysis and predictive policing. And those are two different things. Obviously, we're not going to engage in any activity that is going to expose the city to additional liability or to any kind of liability. But at the same time, understanding how certain factors that we may not have been able to see a pattern in the development of effect policing, especially in terms of training, in terms of use of specific techniques or tools, not having to do anything with arrest data or things like that, are going to result in an improvement in how we police. And so, so I don't think we should confuse predictive analysis with predictive policing because predictive analysis is really about how you alter those data points that are going to appear in the evaluation to improve results. So if it's going to be more training time or on a particular device or tool, if it's going to be a pattern that develops as far as when specialized units like the behavioral health team are deployed, those are the types of things that predictive analysis show and have nothing to do with the predictive policing that Mr. Gresham highlighted was so problematic in New York City.
Colleagues, any questions? Well, before you all roll this out, was the community engaged with it about this SAS program?
Obviously, the city's been having a lot of discussions with community groups about our transition into a smart city location. The specific SAS contract was not a part of it, but it has been a part of our broader community discussion around this. And I would just highlight the city, when it submitted its permission to enter into negotiations for a single source contract, did include an extensive survey that it had completed and identified a need for this type of analysis. And that was in part with community engagement, with conversations with our partners in the Buffalo Public Schools, in the Buffalo Sewer Authority, with, I attended a Board of Block Clubs meeting to talk about smart city initiatives with Dr. Traveris when he was a member of the administration. So this is something that our residents are aware of and have clamored for. They want more reliable and more in-depth analysis of how the city conducts its business. And they want to see the types of efficiencies that this type of analysis yields.
The seated reform board that's, I believe, has been seated, did they have any conversation about this SAS project plan?
I do not believe so, no, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, colleagues? I don't want to take up all the time. I did have a question regarding the what the robust cancellation policy. Can someone explain to me what the robust cancellation policy is?
I can highlight some of that. And then if the, if Daryl wants to chime in further, he will feel free to do so. But as we know, first off, the council's approval is a critical, but still preliminary step before the execution of a contract. So this position us to enter into the contract when we have the confidence that it's the right thing to do from a fiscal standpoint. But it doesn't necessarily lock us in immediately anything. And then there were provisions, a cancellation clause based on availability of resources. There were also, the payment dates were structured so that there was sufficient lead times, including a 90 day and then a six month date in the contract to ensure that the cash flow issue when we receive, when we receive certification from the controller that we had the resources available to enter, did not pose to be problematic. So the normal cancellation clause, the restructuring of the payment dates to deal with cash flow and of course, the fact that council approval is critical, but does not execute the contract, only the mayor executes the contract, are all the safeguards we put in place to ensure that this is fiscally prudent to take this action at this time.
Because in reading the contract, I see that the first 857,000 is due, the first 90 days. Then after that, 30 days later, 457,000 is due. And then after that, I guess the final payment. But the one thing that disturbed me is that the customer will pay such invoices net 30 days regardless of whether the customer discontinues its use of software. So that's the thing that, you know, it said robust cancellation policy, but it says even if we discontinue, we have to make this payment.
So that language is, does not pertain to the execution of the contract. That language pertains to whether or not we want to continue using the contract after we fully are using the software, after we fully commit it to entering into the contract. So that language is there, you know, to ensure that whether we choose to use it or not, like any piece of software, if you buy Microsoft Word, but continue to write all your document and pages, you still have to pay the licensing fee for Word. But that does not pertain to whether or not we execute the contract.
What other cities are using this? I know Mr. Gresham mentioned New York City. Or is New York City actually using the same program?
I don't know specifically which entities use SAS. I know it's used by the state. I would refer that question to the representatives from staff or from SAS to highlight who their other clients may be.
Morning. Thank you, Rob. Mr. Chairman and committee members.
Mr. Connors, can you hold on a moment? Before I go to you, let me go to Councilmember Noakowski. He had a question. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for Donna, Commissioner. When we're in our budget lines, are we able to, you know, make this happen since we are in quite a fiscal position?
We had included, Donna Estrich, Commissioner of Administration and Finance. We had included 600,000 in our capital that we sold in February of last year after your approval, February, March. And then we had 600,000 in our budget, in our M I S budget for the current year to pay for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members. Again, my name is David Connors. I represent SAS. I'm based here in Albany, New York. To the question, SAS is leveraged widely across the public sector, across all federal government agencies, are listed as SAS customers here in New York. State of New York government leverages SAS widely in New York City. Because SAS isn't a product that you would think of like a Microsoft Word. SAS is analytics capability. So we're leveraged in a number of different ways. For example, Rob had mentioned the Department of Health where we're helping the epidemiologists study comorbidities that are being impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic through to the Division of Budget, who leverages SAS for revenue forecasting. So we're leveraged a number of different ways with our capabilities. But we list New York State Government and New York City Government, including a few other local governments here in New York as our customers.
And can you, what other cities can we contact? I know you said New York City, but are there other cities that this has been going on? And how long has this been instituted, this process?
Specific to a smart city engagement, like what Buffalo is endeavoring to do, we would point you to our customers in Cary, North Carolina, in Wake County, the largest county in. uh, the largest county in North Carolina. They are leveraging SaaS capabilities for a number of different smart city uses. Um, I, I can point specifically to, uh, SaaS is doing analysis on their water meters where we're providing them, uh, proactive analysis, uh, on, on water usage. And their Department of, of Water has been making certain policy implementations based on that new data that SaaS has been providing them, uh, through, uh, analytics and reporting. So we're happy to set that up for you, Mr. Chairman.
Where, where are you using SaaS in this particular aspect as it relates to policing?
So is, as far as, is policing, um, we have a, a couple of federal, uh, customers who are using it, um, in the Department of Justice. As far as policing, uh, on the local level, we list a, uh, uh, the, the Victoria Police, uh, in Australia as our customer for policing. Um, so we are happy to make connections with some of those customers to be able to, uh, meet with, with your teams to have those conversations.
So you said in, in Australia, any, the federal police, who, were you, the FBI? Who, who, who can you point us to that are in the U.S. that could give us some guidance on the success of this, this program that you have?
Some of our customers, uh, at this time have an NDA in place, Mr. Chairman. So what I can do for you is I can pull together a list for you and provide it to the committee to review, and we can set up, um, uh, meetings that, that, uh, we deem, uh, appropriate with your consultation.
Okay. If you could provide us that, that would be great. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, I mean, I don't want to compare. I want to compare apples to apples with regards to, um, municipalities that are using it. Um, is there a comparison analysis, uh, with city, cities the same size, uh, of Buffalo that is using, uh, this product?
Um, uh, Mr. Rivera, I'll have to get back to you with, with that information and those data points. What I don't want to do is suggest a customer that maybe SaaS does not have an agreement in place as a referenceable customer at this point, uh, just considering the nature of the work, uh, that we do in partnership with, with our customers. But I'm happy to research that question and provide feedback to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Rob Mayer, Director of Policy, I can just add one more thing, um, uh, to address Councilman Rivera's, uh, concern is that, um, I think, uh, our goal, uh, in pursuing this, uh, specific contract, um, is to, uh, uh, establish a, a best practice that other cities can follow. I think we're at the point where we've done, uh, enough research and have, um, and have engaged the, the, the community and other stakeholders where Buffalo can now be seen as leading an effort as opposed to following it. And this isn't based on blind faith. This is based on SaaS's work, uh, with other governmental entities at the federal, at the state level in other countries, um, and work that, again, I'll point to the Department of Health, um, was done under the most strenuous circumstances. So we know that SaaS is a company that can deliver. They've proven that they can deliver in high-stress, uh, situations, and they can deliver, uh, high-quality work product. Um, we have an opportunity, uh, because SaaS is, is looking, uh, to, uh, expand their footprint in police reform. And I think just really in the last few months, the need for this type of analysis and of police reform has become more apparent, um, than it has previously. Um, so Buffalo can really be a leader now instead of, of waiting for other cities to do this first and potentially better.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with Rob Mayer in, in that ideally, um, an application of this program would lead to the city of Buffalo being a leader, not a follower, and establishing best practices. But, um, I have a lot of questions, uh, regarding predictive policing. Um, I'd like to see the list of other agencies that the SaaS representative is going to provide to the council, um, and some other questions moving forward. So is, Rob, is there any sort of, um, time urgency with this? Because I'd be more comfortable if we kept this in committee. I'm not a voting member of the committee, but I would be more comfortable if we kept it in committee and we were able to answer some more of these questions moving forward.
Um, I think that's a, a good question, Councilmember. I, I would say, uh, that there is a timeliness issue, uh, only because, um, and I would just point to, uh, how the federal government has distributed, uh, aid previously in two thousand nine with the ERA, and again, uh, this past year with the CARES Act. Uh, both of those, uh, federal aid packages came out quickly with the expectation that local government had, uh, projects, uh, both infrastructure and policy-wise, that were designed to, uh, access those, uh, those funds quickly because, uh, in the lead-up to their enactment, people had an expectation that they were going to happen. So, obviously, um, uh, having this critical, uh, approval from the council, uh, will ensure that once that aid becomes available, we have the ability to implement something quickly. Um, I, I think that's the, the timeliness of it. And I, I think SaaS, knowing that timeliness is important, will be able to quickly turn around, uh, the information, uh, the, the committee and other members are seeking. So hopefully we can have those, those discussions, uh, expeditiously and address everyone's concerns.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to have all my, the conversation and questions I have in, in a timely fashion. But, um, in addition to that, you know, I do want to see the list of agencies from the SaaS representative. Obviously, I, I would like some time. I, I'm not going to speak for the other councilmembers, but I'd like time to reach out to those agencies, have some conversations. So again, I'm, I'm not a member of the committee, but, um, I, I'm ready to have those conversations, but I'm not sure if it would be, um, we'd be able to have them in time for approval on next Tuesday. But, um, I am ready to have those conversations as soon as possible because I do have a number of questions.
And, um, I think it's just important to reiterate, um, what we're doing with SaaS is not, uh, predictive policing. Um, the type of analysis really, and I think, uh, Mr. Connor said that, it's about, uh, a proactive understanding of how, uh, data points, uh, can influence our, our understanding of policing. So this is not about, um, uh, creating a model, uh, where, uh, uh, it proved to be highly problematic in New York City for a variety of reasons that Mr. Gresham, uh, pointed out. But this is really about having, uh, data and the ability to analyze it for those deeper insights that a quantitative analysis yields. Um, and so I think it's just important to maintain that, uh, these are two, uh, two different things with two different intended outcomes and two different types of analysis that we'll be engaged in.
Council President Priggin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry I was on, uh, a little late. So I don't know if there was a full presentation, uh, of this product. Um, I think that if, if there is a time element, um, and then the provider may need to do a full presentation. Um, comparing this to COVID, I got it, but I don't get it. Um, I agree with Councilmember Rivera, the apples-to-apples approach. I'm, I'm a little confused of what the outcomes are, how they're measured. I think that that has been the voice of, um, every, almost every council member that has spoke. We just don't know. I don't want to rush to approve this based on if money comes. At the end of the day, we need information. I'm not sure if the committee meeting is the place for the full outlay. It could be just a regular meeting that is public, uh, that people are able to hear, um, and that the council, uh, is able to, uh, kind of digest this. If we were not, um, doing Zoom meetings, we probably, probably would have had a separate meeting in order to hear this out. So since we are doing Zoom meetings, and I am concerned that the public understands it and that the council understands it, I don't think that the urgency of if come should be what our focus is. The focus should be on what does this produce, what exactly is it? And hearing intelligently and not being rushed through. I mean, we have a whole agenda here, um, and I, I, I am not, and I'm a part of every committee, I'm not ready to move this forward, not based on this is not the right thing. It's based on, we just don't know. Um, and so I think that at this amount of money, um, and what this could produce either positively or negatively, um, is important. I don't mind being a leader or a, I, I always say I want Buffalo to be a leader, but I want us to be a leader based on facts and what we know and not based on timeframes, and we got to get this done so we're ready. We'll be ready, but we need information, and this needs a full, full presentation of how it works. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other colleagues? Yeah, I, I second that, Council President. Um, we, we need more information, and we definitely need to be able to analyze, to, as Council Majority Leader said, apples-to-apples, how this kind of, uh, you know, benefits, um, our cause and, and this process as we look at police reform. And certainly the committee that's been seated should be a part of that conversation. I think, um, we asked about the Boulder Raps and how the community been engaged on those things. I think anything that has to do with police reform should have the community, the community's engagement in the forefront of it, not before, I mean, not after, but before. And it should be, as we talk about a robust cancellation pro- policy, there should be a robust community engagement policy with this as well. And I know you, Rob, you said there were some other meetings that happened prior to COVID regarding these, the smart cities plan and that. Um, but for this particular project, especially in the midst of the fact that we are really, um, struggling financially, um, we would definitely need to know that the outcomes with this is going to be something that's going to move, um, our police reform agenda forward, and not something that we're just casting a dollar, um, somewhere and don't get the outcomes that we're expecting. So if we can set that up with the Chief of Staff, um, something that is more robust for the, the members, um, we certainly would appreciate that. The sooner the better. But at this point in time, um, we're not able to move on it at this point.
I think we're happy to work with a, a presentation, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
I think by Councilmember Bowman. Next item?
Item number three, permission to purchase tasers.
Uh, can you bring up the, uh, agenda? Thank you. Uh, item is open?
If this item is open, and who's going to speak on this? Police Department?
Yes, sir. I've been joined by representatives from BPD.
Okay. Captain?
Good morning, uh, Captain Ronaldo, Buffalo PD. So, uh, given the fiscal constraints and budgetary concerns that we have with the original taser project, we went back and we looked at a plan that would allow us to still actively deploy tasers throughout the vast majority of the department, but with some cost savings in mind. And the plan that we came up with was to purchase eighty-five of the devices, but purchase, uh, a maintenance plan for all of patrol. So the eighty-five devices would be spread out through the five patrol districts, pretty much ensuring that ten officers per district per shift would be equipped with tasers. So that, that puts a number of these devices out on the streets twenty-four seven for circumstances where their use would be appropriate. In doing so, we were able to bring the estimated cost on a yearly basis down to just under two hundred thousand dollars a year. The issue, and I believe I spoke on this a couple of weeks ago, is that the cartridges that are required for the device run approximately thirty to forty dollars a cartridge, and each officer has to fire eight of them just in training alone. And then on a yearly basis, they have to fire between four to six of them to recertify a year. So the cost of the cartridges can be extremely expensive for an agency our size. What this contract allows us to do is ensure that we have unlimited cartridges from taser to the life of the contract. So whether the department fires one or one thousand cartridges, that is included in the item itself, is part of the contract. The other obstacle I spoke about was training, getting enough of our patrol officers to be appropriate level of training to be issued with this device. We have looked at it internally, uh, known by Deputy Commissioner Lawrence who oversees our training academy, and we feel confident that with our double updates and the current schedule of training, provided that there's no changes, uh, due to COVID restrictions, that we should be able to relatively quickly put a number of these devices out in each district and follow that training up throughout the rest of the year into the beginning of the year to get all approximately five hundred members of the patrol force certified so that they can share these weapons.
Councilmembers? Um, Captain, so we're going to have ten devices within the five districts per officer?
No, so in other words?
So you're going to have ten officers?
Ten officers per district per shift. So at any given point, there should be at least fifty of these devices on the streets twenty-four seven.
So, so was there any chance that an officer responding to a call would not have a taser?
Yes, there is a chance, but higher priority calls are always dispatched to multiple officers. So given the fact that some of our minimum manpower is between eight to twelve officers per shift per district, if ten officers have the taser, it, it greatly reduces the chance that an officer without a taser by, you know, themselves would be dispatched to a higher priority call, uh, for instance, a mental health call, person with a weapon, that type of thing. And additionally, uh, it is a device that if an officer arrives on scene, if he or she does not have the taser, but they're quickly assessing that there could be a potential need for this device, that they always have the ability to call for assistance and somebody with the device to respond, even if not from that district, but from a neighboring district, they could respond. So having fifty of these on the street at any given point around the clock is a pretty good saturation. We feel that having these readily available.
Um, Councilmember Mayer?
Thank you. You mentioned that, uh, we're looking at eighty-five tasers?
Correct.
Divided by five districts?
Correct.
Okay, that's seventeen tasers per district. I don't know how you got ten. Um, so it's seventeen tasers per district, and these tasers are shared between the platoons?
Correct. They would be shared. However, the plan is for ten per district. We would need to keep at least ten of them in reserve because these devices do tend to, uh, break or not work appropriately, need to be updated for issues, just like the body camera program. We have extra cameras in reserve, so there is a fair amount of that. Additionally, we would look to equip our BHT team as well as some of our traffic division. So for the patrol side, it would be ten per district with the remaining seventy-five, uh, devices to be spread out, uh, like I said, through BHT and traffic. Also, we would need to keep at least ten devices in the training academy to facilitate training of officers.
Okay, I mean, it, it's, obviously I would like the officers that are responding to the nine-eleven calls, the frontline officers. I know the traffic division does not answer nine-eleven calls, so they won't be responding to the domestic violence and the shootings and things like that. Um, the patrol officers, the responders would be responding because I think that they should have the tasers because they're the ones that we normally see responding to nine-eleven calls. So, um, giving the districts fifty, keeping another thirty-five for other things. I'd rather be, I'd feel a lot safer if the police officers had them, the ones that are actually answering nine-eleven calls, um, because they're the ones that are going to be dealing with the mental health problems. They're the ones that are going to be dealing with the domestic violence and all these serious crimes that are going out there. So I'm just- So I'm just curious to see why um we're giving traffic division tasers when the guys that are answering nine eleven calls probably need them more.
Uh, the only reasoning behind that, and we can gladly adjust the numbers accordingly. Our traffic division does wind up working a number of events where, whether it be demonstrations, protests. Uh, events like that, they also do offer back of coverage to the districts. So since traffic officers are sitting wide, we just felt it made sense for some of them to have the weapon to respond. Uh, citywide with it in the event that a weapon was needed and it was not literally available in the district. But we're absolutely open to readjusting the numbers and possibly going up to twelve to thirteen per district.
Yeah, on the other side, if you get a call in the E district and the officer does not have a taser, the guy uh. At a traffic event has a taser on him. Um, I think the more likelihood of something happening would be with the patrol officers versus the traffic division.
Colleagues, any other questions? Council member Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for Commissioner Estrich, uh, just two of them. Did the, I was under the assumption, did this council previous uh previously already approve to purchase tasers? And uh, the second question is, what budget line will this be coming out of?
Um, the council approved the contract last year, so I would need to check with Captain Ronaldo. But I'm sure it's the same um. Contract that we're working on, he's just amended it a bit, so it's a reduced cost for this current year. Um, and we are working with the police department to move some money around to come up with financing for it.
Thank you.
Donald, we, last year we approved, wasn't it four hundred thousand for the tasers or was it more than that?
Uh, it was four hundred or three seventy-five, it was pretty close to that, yes. I could look up what the actual number was.
I mean, the only thing that concerns me is that, and I know Captain Ronaldo said that, you know, uh, when there's a s- extreme call, there's actually. You know, a number of cars that are there, but I would be concerned that there's an opportunity that. An officer can roll up on a si- situation and would not have a taser. What number could we use to make certain that all the officers per platoon would make, definitely have a, have a taser? That wouldn't, you know, we can do the same thing, but we can make certain that every officer's on a particular shift has a taser. What number would, would that be, Captain?
Sure, um, well, the issue that we run into is on our overlap, so.
Are you talking into a microphone? Cause I, you kinda go out when you. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
So we, we run two shifts that overlap. We have an afternoon shift that works three thirty to one thirty, and then our midnight shift works eight PM to six AM. So between eight PM and one thirty AM, each district could have upwards of twenty, twenty-four officers potentially working. So again, the idea is to ensure that the sector cars, which is council member Barr mentioned. Those are the district cars that we sign to them on calls would be the ones equipped. The detail cars, uh, which are ones that work on like three-one-one complaints. They attend community meetings, they, they do a lot of the other uh community engagement stuff. Would not necessarily have the greater need for the device. But in order to properly equip device wise, to say, yes, every officer working would potentially have one. I mean, you could be upwards of twenty-five devices per district. But again, when we looked at the operation and who's responding to the calls. If you felt that ten was adequate, if you realigned some of them from traffic, I think we can get up to.
Okay, you're going out, you were going out, we couldn't quite hear what you were saying in the last part.
Again, if we realign the numbers from traffic, then we can get up to that twelve to thirteen number per district.
Can't hear you, can't hear you.
How about now?
A little bit better.
Okay. Again, taking numbers from traffic, we can probably get to twelve to thirteen per district. But again, we think it's pretty adequate.
Okay. Okay, any, any thoughts colleagues? Are we okay? Council president?
Yeah, um, I, I think, um, and I, I could, we could, we could, uh, the sound was going out, but. Um, at the end of the day, I know there's a call for, and this council has agreed. Uh, for more funding also for de-escalation. I just wanna make it plain that when um the last incident happened, which we had um a shooting. That we heard from many in the community and for years of a less lethal way. Uh, a less lethal tool, um, if you will. Um, and this council voted on it, there was no one saying no. Um, at the end of the day, everyone that the police approaches is not in a mental health crisis. There are some bad characters out there, that, that's, we, we can't get away from that. That do not stop because of conversation, that, that are not going to stop because a social worker is on scene. And if that person were hurting another person, um, and, or, or doing the crime. At the end of the day, the police need another tool in the city of Buffalo. We just saw nationally, national news, an African-American male who was killed. And his father was on the news like three days ago, saying, why didn't the police have another tool? So I think, you know, expanding this is important, it's a tool. Um, and we, I've, I've said over the last two year, three, four years. It's just another tool in the toolbox, it is not the answer. We want to see, and we are moving to a model of having, uh, not moving, we're already there, of having. Uh, the social workers on hand, and I said the other day, I witnessed on a, on a particular street. Where the social worker showed up and they didn't, the police didn't need a gun, they didn't need a taser, they didn't need bowler rap. The social workers came and talked this gentleman down and got him the help he needed. So this is just another tool, but everybody out there is not somebody suffering from a mental health crisis. There are some bad characters out there and I still, even the bad characters, I don't wanna see them shot. Out, i- if, if they are resisting, if they're running, I, I wanna see them stop though. And I think eh most people do, so um, I, I, I understand council member Wyatt kinda where you're going. And, and I agree, the more we can expand and get more tools. But I also wanna be clear that I do think that more and more money has to be put into that de-escalation. And I know from what I'm hearing that that is moving and we'll hear more about that too. So I just want the public to be very aware that this council eh is, is not saying, yes, the, the. Tasers are the end-all and we want everybody tased, we don't. We, we do want the more, more training for de-escalation. And when, when that proposal comes in for us of more training, I'm gonna be the first to vote yes. Uh, for that, for more de-escalation training, which will cost more dollars. But it's so important because I've, as I've said over and over, we can either pay a million in a suit, a lawsuit. Or we could put a million into the tools and the first two would be the de-escalation training. But the tasers have been waiting for now, over a year, been talked about for years. And just because one group comes out and says, we don't agree, we've got people calling us saying, you need less lethal. Um, and at the end of the day, this council has to make a decision. And the decision has to be what's, what's best for our citizens. And, and brings less lethal tools. So that we don't, that a, a police officer out there does not have only one tool. And that's the service weapon or even, because everybody's not listening to reason. Everybody's not listening to the training that comes out of the mouth of an officer. At the end of the day, there are some people who are not going to stop. And I think if somebody were being harmed and the, the only weapon the police have or the only tool is the gun. And then they use that, then we're gonna have people saying, they didn't have anything else other than guns. So the more we can, and this is really to the commissioner, the uh, well, to, to deputy commissioners or the uh. That the more tools that we have, but understand that probably the greatest tool that, that we're hearing. And that we agree about is that de-escalation. So we wanna make sure that becomes also a top priority. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you uh to um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any way we can increase the number of tasers? I know we were just getting ready to spend eight hundred thousand for some analytic. Um, and we can't get additional tasers, is there any way that we can increase this number from eighty-five? Um, to maybe a hundred twenty-five?
The, the contract is, sir, will allow us to add on as we see the program necessary. Um, I, but again, I think that given the number and given our manpower deployments, that this would be adequate to begin. So I, my opinion is, I would say we, we stick with this for now. Evaluate it a few months down the road after it's fully deployed and see if there's gaps. I'll be the first one to come and ask you for additional weapons because again, I know what the officers are facing on the street.
Okay, then I'm.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm gonna say this to you because I'm still concerned, I'm still concerned about. An officer coming onto a scene and not having a taser. I know you say that, that's, you know, it's likely but not likely. Um, but if there's a situation that occurs, um, I would like us to go and get these additional tasers. Um, I'm hoping that doesn't happen. Um, I mean, you said, you know, we can come back and review, but if there's a situation that occurs that someone is shot versus using a taser. And I mean, we have to have to figure out the information, but I'd rather us have the, the taser now. Especially when we're getting ready to spend money for two point two million dollars on some statistical thing. And here we ask for tasers and we're willing to cut and, 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 and uh. Uh, minimize that, but we're willing to go to something that we don't even know anything about, we're not even comfortable with. And so we've been waiting for these tasers for a year, I think it's a good compromise to increase the number. Um, because if we're gonna spend two million dollars on some statistical analysis. I think we could spend a little bit more for some tasers that's gonna save a life.
I, I can gladly go back to the company and attempt to see what the additional cost would be to increase the number. To put approximately um twenty of these devices in the five patrol districts. That would more than adequately guarantee that everyone working would have one.
That's fair. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? So you're good, when will you get back to us? Cause we'll send this without rec, Captain? Can you let us know before council meeting?
Soon as we're done here, I'll reach out to the company.
I just.
Thank you. Councilman Majority Leader?
Very much, um, I think this, yeah, putting the, the tasers in the district would reduce the city's liability. Uh, if an officer responds to a call and doesn't have a taser and has to use lethal force. Then the city may be held liable. So I think it would reduce the city's liability regarding the, if we implement it differently than what you're proposing. And that is putting more tasers on the front line. Thank you.
Dude, Ca- Captain, do we have a policy regarding the tasers as of yet? How the use of the tasers?
We're finalizing the uh policy, it's basically a model policy used by. Just about every department across the country that has the devices. So it's our intention that once the policy is finalized, that we would post the policy on our website. Uh, as well as the BPD Facebook page and our other uh public facing forums. So that everybody in the community is aware of what the uh policy says, what the dos and don'ts are.
And can you share that with the council?
Yes, absolutely.
Motion?
Thank you.
Motion without recommendation?
Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski. Thank you, Captain, and deputy.
Item number. Item number four, approved revised salary schedule.
Item's open.
Okay, this item is open um regarding the BMHA and of course, we just have oversight of the BMHA. We don't actually run it, um, but it did kinda uh, when I looked at that, we had a salary schedule. And that it was approved by the committee, um, just wanted to get, reach out and find out if there was community input. And I believe we have the newly elected um chairperson, uh, Mr. Graham on and wanted to speak to that. Is there anybody else other than Mr. Graham that's speaking on this item, chief of staff?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Rodriguez from BMHA has joined us as well, and we also have Teresa Stagman.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, my name's David Rodriguez. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to address this committee, Mr. Chairman and committee members and uh the other uh. Coming council members uh on this call and your staff, uh, as well as members of the public. Um, this item uh is before you today, we are asking you uh to uh consider um adjusting the salary schedule for. Our executive director, uh, Gillian Brown. Uh, as you know, Gillian joined us um first two years uh as general counsel to the housing authority. And uh with that, uh, he brought um uh very good uh knowledge and history of, of the uh. The way that the Buffalo Municipal Housing Authority operated. Um, so he, he brought a stabilizing element to the legal department at that time and subsequent to, to, two years of service. Um, and after an extensive search, um, we zeroed in on Gillian and brought him on board. In twenty eighteen, um, as our executive director. Um, and our, our mission as, as a board at that time and continues to be. Uh, to improve uh the way that we provide services and interact with our residents. Um, our, our, all of the actions that we've taken as a board all throughout have always focused in um. How we can uh bring um new initiatives into the housing authority. How we can improve relationships um with uh the city administration um all throughout, through the, and those legislative bodies. Um, and also how we can um uh reach out into the community. And um get uh benefits through different partnerships with uh different agencies that provide uh services such as mental health. Um, also uh reaching out to our partners at the uh school district. Um, so Gillian um came on board about twenty eighteen. Uh, we entered into the first contract with him then, it expired October of this year. Um, and through those two years, uh, we've seen um a moderate improvement in the services uh that we've been providing to our residents. Um, there's been more interaction with uh the administration and also with the legislative bodies in the city. Gillian has made himself accessible to, I'm sure um some of uh the council members here can attest to that he is accessible to all of you. Um, and to the residents directly. Um, and uh part of bringing Gillian on board was uh a team building effort that we took as a board. To continue to bring in more professionals into the housing authority to um. Uh, move us away uh from what we expected was gonna be um a, a difficult um status by HUD. And we knew that was coming. Um, and Gillian has engaged uh and engaged and continues to engage with HUD, um, our main funding uh source. Uh, to continue uh to improve our scoring uh that HUD subjects the housing authority to. Uh, albeit that, there are still some challenges, um, you know, no one can deny that. The housing authority um has uh been um challenged in many ways uh in, in the past. And we continue to face challenges, however, with Gillian's leadership, we, we, we're very confident that we're turning um the ship around. And we know it's gonna take years to um reach optimal performance. But uh we have a sense of optimism um and uh commitment uh with Gillian. And the team that he's built at his executive level to continue uh in that, in that regard. Um, I, I believe that uh the ch- the chairman of the committee asked that we reached out to the uh community in terms of. Uh, this item and, and uh I can attest that directly, um, we did not have any community meetings. This is usually a, a negotiation that takes place between the executive director and the personnel committee for the housing authority. Um, so thi- this was not a, a public process, it's a, it's a very um. Closed intimate process in re- in regards to a negotiation, the negotiated.
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, let me, hold on, uh. Let, let, let's get to the chase. You said you didn't have any eh community meetings, you didn't hear from the public. Although you talked about the improved relationship with the administration and, and other partners. But he's there to serve the residents, and if you didn't reach out. And if you didn't reach out to the residents, I'm asking you, how did you measure that you're going to give him a raise in these other pieces if you didn't reach out to them?
Well, what, what we do, Chairman, is, is we, um, follow the, uh, data. Um, we look at different complaints and measures in terms of, uh, how the, the housing authority is, um, doing its work with the residents. Um, we, uh, we look at that. We also have always on board with us, um, and, uh, we have one of our newer commissioners, the resident commissioners who are a, a very direct link, um, to the residents, uh, and their unique, uh, nature of, of their position. Obviously, they're commissioners, but they're, um, elected resident commissioners. And, uh, they have a good, uh, sense of the pulse of the community, um, and the residents, um, and, uh, we have a good sense that, uh, Gillian's communications into, um, the resident bodies. Uh, there's also, um, tenet councils, there's the Martha Mitchell, um, center up in, um, Kenfield Langfield. So there's different bodies throughout the housing authority that have representative, um, entities. And, uh, those folks, um, uh, interact and collaborate directly with the executive, uh, with Gillian and his staff. Um, so in taking the, the pulse of that, um, you know, we, we have a sense of confidence in what he's been doing. Uh, you know, the, the level of complaints since he took, um, the, the, uh, the charge have gone down substantially. So, you know, we look at the performance data of the staff and providing the services. But we also, uh, continue to, um, listen to and have him interact directly with the, um, representative bodies throughout the housing authority. So that, that's how we, we get a sense of it.
So are you telling me that you have a evaluation tool that has measurements and things and outcomes that you're basing your com- your comments on and not just your feeling?
Well, you know, feelings are always good to have, we, we are humans, but, um, as, uh, governance requires.
Sir, 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 sir. I'm not asking you for your feelings, I'm asking you, do you have documentation of metrics and data that speaks to what you're saying about Gillian? That he's improved relations with the residents, that he's done X, Y, and Z, that your scores with HUD are improved? Do you have that documentation?
Yes, um, our main, our main management system at the housing authority is GARDI. And in there, we track, um, what's called key performance indicators in terms of what the types of services and how they're being done and provided, um, in a timely manner. Or if not, then they could be analyzed by our various committees in the housing authority and off the board. So, yeah, we do track performance, we, we do, um, evaluate the, the performance. Um, so, yeah, the answer is yes.
Okay, so you have that documentation, I would love to see that. Secondly, what are the other things that you are asking for him to do going forward? Because I also noticed you want to give him a two percent increase every year. Is that without an evaluation?
Well, the, 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 the proposal here is, um, you know, we're looking to give him the raise. Um, and, uh, Terry Spanier, Director of Human Resources, can explain more, um, in terms of the technical aspects of how, uh, the salary is based and then how it, um, it's tracked along in terms of giving reasonable raises. Um, and, and I believe it follows one of the, um, might be the management, um, uh, level employees, their contract, just to, uh, keep, uh, parity in place. Um, but in terms of the expectations going into the future, and when we're envisioning, you know, this three-year contract with Gillian is that, um, you know, the first two years he came in, there was a lot of stabilization work. But going forward, there is a substantial amount of work, um, that has to be done and will be done at different levels in terms of, uh, new development work at various, um, parts of our portfolio. As you're aware, we've put out an RFQ for, um, developers, um, to, uh, enter into partnerships to, uh, improve, um, the capital and, uh, the living conditions at different, uh, parts of the, uh, buildings throughout the city. Um, there's a capital, a major capital improvement, uh, we put out for bond, uh, recently. So there's going to be a lot of capital improvements to different areas, um, different buildings throughout the authority. Um, there's different innovations to improve the service. Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez, I, I hear what you're saying. And again, I would love to see what you, what you came up to produce this evaluation. And secondly, I would like to see the game plan. What is the, um, the, uh, key accountabilities going forward? And I hope that's all written, um, because again, you know, you put forth the, a recommendation for a salary approval, which I have no problem with Gillian. I, I'm just coming from a accountability standpoint that we were in a situation with BMHA, and I'm going to speak specifically to Kenfield Langfield, that there were some challenges there. And there were some issues there that were longstanding issues, that people got raised after raised after raised. But the environment for the residents had not, had not been improved. And so before we approve this, I want to make certain that the person who we have in place has been improving. And I don't want to just go by feelings, I want to go by some testimonials, some community input. But the fact that you didn't have that information and that you told me that was about feeling concerns me. And the other pieces is that, you know, the people who are doing the approval, the approval process are people who, um, in some cases were appointed. And so that concerns me, but again, that's your process. But again, I want to see the information and how you came about your recommendation. And then I want to know what the community said. Before you go any further, let me go to Mr. Graham, Commissioner Graham, um, you're on, let's hear from you.
Okay, right now I'm representing Renato Graham. I'm, I have dual positions. I'm still the chairman of advisory board for the Buffalo Municipal Housing Authority, and I'm a new elected commissioner. My first board meeting was last, uh, month. So let, let me go back in history. BMHA was evaluated for the structure of their properties. Kenfield Langfield rated number six at the bottom of the list for the whole United States from my understanding. Financially, they rated terrible. HUD said that they would go into receivership after two years if they don't get it together. The two years is now. I don't know if they got it together. I'm the chairman of advisory board. They did not talk to us about the raids. We had found twenty thousand problems with BMHA. My phone calls weren't being returned. A lot of the tenant councils tell me their phone calls weren't returned. Right now, somebody is telling me that I need to speak with them, the LBJ, and say they're completely unhappy. So I'm just being real here, okay? The relationship is awful, is terrible. I don't know if they improved or not because there was no evaluation done on this. So in my training from HUD, it says commissioners should be thoroughly familiar with HUD policies, limitations, and employment contract terms from new executive directors before beginning the hiring process. If HUD policy does not follow, commissioners may be reliable for wages and other conditions of employment extending beyond the typical two-year contract. He just got a three-year contract. So we're going beyond the two years. I don't know as a commissioner, I don't know as advisory board, did we approve, improve in the process? He should get a raise if he turned the place around because the place was terrible, all, almost to the level of receivership. So if he turned it around, of course, we should give him a raise. But I don't know as the representative, I am the sole spokesperson in our documents for the residents of BMHA. We have not been meeting the residents because of COVID. So we have no idea of what's going on. I'm just being honest. So I support the chairman. He, we, we, we said the chairman should go forward and he gave me his word that we were going to work and change this. But right now, it's not good.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may briefly, um, and, and, and I, I welcome, uh, Commissioner Graham, uh, you know, he's a breath of fresh air and, and we're going to do, um, some, some good work together. But it's important to note that, you know, Gillian's been with the housing authority for two years as the executive director. And he's taken over the reins of, of a, of a very challenged housing authority, um, that for many years, um, was having a lot of trouble. Currently, we are in troubled status, which, which is a very serious status. And, you know, Mr. Graham has a point that if it's not turned around, there's going to be some serious, um, intervention on, on behalf of HUD. But that being said, um, you know, in the last two years, um, you know, that's just the beginning of a turnaround process. It's going to take more than three years to occur. Um, but, uh, we have engaged with HUD directly and, you know, we're, we're working on turning things around. But as you know, I mean, this, this is a forty million plus, uh, organization with thousands of residents and capital improvement, um, challenges that we're taking on, and it's going to take time to turn it around. But in order to maintain stability and leadership, uh, I submit to you that this is very important. Um, you know, to keep, uh, Gillian at the helm and to incentivize him and reward him for the work that he's done for the last two years. And we, we, and Chairman, you, you, you've made a practical and reasonable request and we'll give you that information to your committee. Um, but, you know, I submit that the, the next three years are going to be harder work than the, the last two years. And, you know, we are working our way through that and we're going to get out of that troubled status, but it's going to take some time.
Yeah, and like I said, I have no problem with Gillian. He's been very responsive when I called him on issues. However, my concern is we, as it relates to the sentiments and the feelings of the residents. Um, I'm not confident that all the commissioners are doing their responsibility or due diligence in meeting the needs of the residents. And so I need to see that, I need to see that there's some effort being made. I know that there had never, well, there, before, since I've been council member, there was no meeting with the executive director and the residents of Kenfield Langfield until I met with Gillian when he first came on, and we've only had one meeting. Um, I think, and I share this with him, that I think that he needs to do his due diligence and meet with the residents at all the different entities. It shouldn't be, you're just relying on the input from the people who work for you. You should be doing that on your own. When someone calls me as a council member about an issue, I don't just send my staff and say, hey, go fix that, figure it out. I go myself and see what's going on. I go myself and hear from residents what the issues are. So if he's not doing those things, which I recommended, he's his own boss, but I would hope because of the concerns that I got from people, when the previous person was in place, that they weren't being heard. But it seems from Mr. Graham, the commissioner, that those same things are continuing. So I have some concerns and I'm hoping that you can give me, Mr. Rodriguez, um, the, the, the write-up of which, how you, how you can show, um, the outcomes have improved since his, his arrival. And I'm not saying that I don't believe it, I'm going by what you tell me. If you tell me that, I'm trusting you're telling me the truth. Um, but certainly for me, there should be some type of documentation about what you're measuring him on going forward. Because I'm, I've managed people, I've done evaluations. And, and I would be very specific with you, when I told them that I'm expecting X, Y, and Z, they knew what they're working towards. It wasn't a surprise, at the end of that one year, we sat down and we went over those items that we spoke to. We want to make sure that residents are being proved, uh, being, uh, their issues are being addressed. Commissioners are being in the loop, those pieces that really make this system work. I think the process or the system of BMHA and, and the, the hierarchy and the governmental or internal workings is a good piece, but it just doesn't seem like everyone's following it. I can tell you right now that I'm having issues or I'm hearing about issues with a certain, um, person in Kenfield Langfield. That shouldn't be, the, the executive director should be assisting and addressing those type of issues because that affects, um, what the residents, the, the sentiments of the residents. And that, I, I, that's, that's very important to me. Because again, I think sometimes they are left, um, out there and they're come and addressed when need be. If the news comes and it's a whole issue, but when they call with a normal call, it just doesn't seem that their issues are addressed. And so I would love to see improvement in that. And from what Mr. Graham is saying, um, we have a ways to go in that. And the fact that the, the standing with HUD still concerns me. So I'm saying, how do you give someone a five percent increase when you have these issues? But again, that's your guys' decision, um, if you can provide me the documents and as well as the, with the outcomes and what we're looking to do going forward. I know you talked about capital campaigns, all those things. What are you measuring him on going forward? So the next time you come with a, um, increase in salary, we know exactly what we're talking about. That he's done X, Y, and Z, he's increased, um, participation with residents and those type of things.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll, I'll ensure that I get you the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, documents that, uh, establish the, um, requirements and the performance requirements going forward with Mr. Brown. But I, I also want to concur with your, um, your concerns. Um, that customer service is number one and should be number one, um, objective of everybody to ensure that, uh, the residents are the ones who are being heard and are being, uh, taken care of. So, you know, you have my a hundred percent concurrence on that. And as the board will continue moving in that direction with all our commissioners and our executive staff. And thank you for your time.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, can we send this without recommendation?
Motion to send without recommendation.
Will we get that information before the next council meeting, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'll work with, um, our, uh, HR Director Teresa Spanier to get those, um, to get you the, uh, the performance, uh, uh, measurements that we're going to be looking for and, and going forward with the three years.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, can we go back, uh, do we have the controller's office still on? The deputy controller, I just wanted to ask about the CAFR. It, can we?
Which item do you want to go back to?
Um, let's go, just go. Cash flow, number one.
Uh, motion to revisit item number one.
Um, Deputy Controller, when, I know we do in our annual audit, is that taking place as we, our year in audit? Is that being taken, taking place now?
Yes, we should be finalizing all it, uh, definitely within the next week or two.
When will we have a report?
Um, we'll have it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so by the end of November?
Oh, definitely by the end of November, we'll have the CAFR available. Uh, the, the CAFR that could sign that a annual, uh, financial report for the city of Buffalo, which will report out, um, the city financials for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I've been working, uh, to finalize, uh, the numbers with our external auditors now.
Okay, that's it? Thank you, sir.
No other items?
Anything else? I think we're it.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, okay, motion to, we said motion to send without rec, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.